This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the March 6, 2023 Regular Council Meeting to order at 7:00 P. M. All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, Mr. Williams.
A little carried away there.
I'm so excited to be here.
I am very patriotic every night when it just jumped that one, sorry.
Okay. Sometimes I need a little.
No.
Any additions or corrections intended tonight? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda?
And then to accept the agenda is written.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Wagner. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
I'm sorry, who's second?
I'm sorry.
Wagner.
I'm sorry, Steph.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any presentations tonight? I do not have a mayor's report. I thought I'd spare you on the package trivia. This month, anyway, so. And I have nothing other but to report at this meeting. Are there any council committee meeting reports tonight?
I have some from the parks. And I apologize, I haven't made it in the C U since then, but I'll come in this week.
Okay.
They have a few things. So they, first of all, the financial report was MIA. I know you said you were gonna talk about moving that to someone else's plate.
If I get an email, I can print it in five seconds. I just didn't.
Or I think it would be like automated.
I need a reminder.
Okay. That wasn't what was conveyed at the last meeting, so that's why they thought that. Okay, so still that should go to Angie, then?
And Cassandra can easily do it if I'm not here, but just.
Okay.
It works a lot better if we just get it.
An email?
Like when the agenda goes out, just include one of us or both of us.
Okay.
It's just, that's the way we, it's always kind of been that way.
They want. Well, so in the work they're doing around the tobacco ordinance, they have been looking at the current ordinance and have found some things that don't seem to work. So they're trying to look at a revised proposal. But one of the biggest things in the meantime is that the existing ordinance states that there's different things, but it's like certain areas are supposed to be signed, certain areas are supposed to be signed, but the whole park is so free. And basically, none of that has ever been put into place years later. So they're feeling a little frustrated that, you know, we have an ordinance, but probably a lot of citizens don't realize that there are areas that either are designated smoking areas or is designated as non-smoking areas, and none of that is signed. And then it sounds like it hasn't even actually been met, so.
Because at the time.
The verbiage, yeah, isn't, hasn't ever been carried out.
Right. So there's costs associated with that, like basically, each area is probably gonna cost fifteen hundred to two thousand because of like a bench and the stanchion where the cigarette butts can go and all that. That is not, parks is super strapped, so potentially we'd put a plan if that's. And council at the time didn't kind of buy into that part of it, and so they didn't direct staff to probably go outfit all the things. So that we could come up with a number, and then if that's something council as a whole wants to instill, or maybe they don't want to and they need to amend the ordinance, I don't know.
Yeah, they realized it probably won't fit in the current fiscal year, so they wanted to.
But I can get numbers.
To have it hopefully included next time. And then to that effect, they know that they're lean, and they want us to consider a thing they usage fees, if that would help in the budget cycle.
Yeah, and we did see that. What was weird is one of their things came to staff and one came to coun, or got, didn't make it in time for this packet, but came to council.
Okay.
So that was, the weird part is staff probably isn't gonna impose all of that expense without having council, like, buy into it, so, yeah. But I can get the numbers for that.
That is, they are interested in that.
Okay.
And then they had a few questions, just of like status on things. I can take that to separately.
Okay.
Specials, financial report. Yeah, those are the major ones.
And then, did you already talk to council about the, did they send the soil-water conservation thing as a recommendation to council, or no? The signage, or is that just something they were?
Um.
If not, will you tell council about it?
Yeah, I didn't see that come through. So a request came from the Soil and Water Conservation District that they essentially are trying to identify ash trees that are kind of easily accessible, or, you know, ones that people come across, not deep in the woods, that people be able to see, and they would put signs up to educate, A, on identifying this is an ash tree, and then B, on the Emerald Ash Borer, which if you guys don't know, is a major, major pest that has been in the U.S. for quite some time, but has only in the past year been detected in Oregon. If it takes off to the extent that is easily possible, it could completely obliterate our entire state's population of Oregon ash. Obviously, they've banked millions or billions of seed. But this effort is just to, to get the word out to people because there's no treating preventatively for the borer beetle. But if people know the signs of an afflicted tree and can call it in, and they can take that tree out, it will slow down the spread of it just going unchecked. So we do have a lot of ash trees. They had originally kind of sent through a request, and it was vague, and it sounded like they wanted us to like map out every ash tree on city property, which shows up with like, no, not realistic. But really, all they want is like, where are some key ones, and if so, could we put some signage? There are some great ones right at the point at Aura, but they're very young. So I think, so Spencer Kroll, who's on the Parks Committee and is on the watershed and knowledgeable about trees, is personally gonna go out and identify some older options in city parks as well, submit those to the council that they can, us, the Conservation District. And then whatever ones meets their needs, the Parks Committee has recommended that we, yes, they can put the signs in that they wish in the book. So that was kind of a long.
Yeah.
So yeah, I think it's a good idea, a good effort, anything we can do to help, you know, we're not out. Sounds like any cost they're gonna.
They're gonna furnish the signs and do the installation, and then if something happens soon, we'd let them know, and they could replace them.
What was the entity that's gonna put up the signage?
It is the SWCD. I don't know, what is it?
Soil and Water Conservation District.
Yeah, but is it, it's the.
Columbia.
Columbia, right.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilman.
About how the Public Works Committee meeting. And we worked on the sidewalk connectivity plan. They're making progress on that. It'll probably take a while, I'm sure, to fully flesh it out, identify funding sources and different things. We also had some discussion around, and I think everybody got sent the links to the Dark Skies Initiative and Bicycle Friendly Cities. We had some discussions around that. The committee pretty well themselves axed the bicycle friendly.
Axed?
Did away with.
Yeah. I didn't know if you said ask or ax.
Okay, axed, axed manned. They, yeah, when I went to print out or looked at how many pages it was, it was like eighty-nine pages for the application. Very in-depth. All these questions about demographics and usage, which is fine, I mean, and, but actually, some of the committee members, there was something, some tie with the school, and they were thinking this just wasn't gonna work, so. They declined to move forward on that. I think in the last meeting, I talked about kind of this new process that we're following, and I may have actually got a little bit ahead of the game. I think we're still trying to figure out how this is supposed to work. Because when you're coming up with an idea and you wanna bounce it off the rest of the committee, it's really not moving forward till the committee says, yeah, we think this has enough merit, we wanna move forward on it. That's when it should come up to council, and then council needs to give the feedback back. I might have got a little ahead on this. Even on the Dark Skies Initiative, our, Michael Calhoun, our chair, and he was suggesting that we might just take the relevant parts of that initiative and try to apply that through either our building codes or, or something like that. To formally apply to that seemed a little strenuous, and enforcement is going to be a big stumbling block. I don't think our police officer is gonna be out there with a heat signature gun telling you, oh, your hundred Calvin's over, or something, so. You know, the logistics of it. I think it's the right thing to do. I think we all appreciate our night skies and we wanna preserve it, but I think we can just kind of do it in-house and not worry so much about getting national recognition. So that's where we're kind of moving. Committee members are pretty sensitive to, I think, I think they're feeling at times restrained. And it's, again, this process, I think we're still, I hope everybody understands, we're still trying to fill our way through it, refine it, make it for it works for everybody. They, there were some correspondence, and they felt like, oh, we can't even come up with a question and start to flesh it out, because, you know, before it goes, needs to go to council. And like I said, I think where I misinterpreted it, I stepped forward too soon. Yeah, you can do a preliminary on it, enough to inform the rest of the committee, but then you need to go, okay, before we move any further, we move it up to council, council gives blessing back. Otherwise, we get into that situation where you spend a lot of time and effort and council or staff, or whatever valid reason, say, no, we can't do this, so. So anyhow, we're getting there.
Dale, I have a question. Wonder if it's an issue that's, it's kind of urgent, that's pressing, that it can't afford a two- or three-week timeframe to come to council and then go back to the committee? And how do you determine the importance of, of an issue? Would it go right to the city administrator and then?
Are you talking about like there's some issue at a park?
In public works.
Yeah.
Is that what you're talking about, Dale?
Well.
Process?
You know, a lot of this revolves around people come up with ideas of, I see these cities do this, we wanna try to implement this, or, or like the water reservoir thing, JR brought that up, we fed it back to them, you know, and they fleshed it out. But if they had came up with that themselves, it would have been the same thing. Yeah, if I think something, they see something that's really urgent in nature, one, I would think they would even bypass the meeting and come talk to staff.
Yeah, so most of the committee members, if there's something urgent, they either call or they do a work order. Like there's some problem in a park with like loose screws or something, they have copies of the work order form, they just fill it out and turn it into City Hall. So that's how we deal with kind of urgent things. To me, urgent, it isn't really urgent unless it's like a safety risk or some danger to the public or something.
I mean, I suppose if there was a grand opportunity or something, somebody came across and it's got a short deadline, I mean, that's something.
Yeah.
Kind of sidestep, but again, it's gonna go right to staff, whether they have the time to fill it out.
Right.
Or sign on it.
How quick the deadline?
I think, you know, there's flexibility there, but I think it's the day-to-day things that were, that come up, and people have ideas and wanna try to move forward, that we wanna follow this process on.
Does there, all the council have those forms, committee forms, that they could?
Yeah.
Bring in and submit them to me or Josette, so we could set the next agenda?
Yeah, so usually, they just either bring them up to you, and you bring them to me, or they talk about them in your meeting, and you guys agree to talk about it.
Yeah, that's the way.
Yeah.
We should be doing it, and I haven't gotten one for a long time.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
I was using on the report here, but there's like more space than I need in certain areas, and then in certain areas, I'm like, I need eight times as much space, so I've just been keeping notes now.
Like tweak it.
With the same information on the floor. I didn't really, we were supposed to be turning them in, sorry.
Well, I didn't, yeah, I haven't.
You don't have to turn them in, just share with him what he wants, something on the agenda ahead of the meeting, that's.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Otherwise, those issues and concerns get lost.
Right.
Yeah.
So on this, this Dark Sky Initiative, we do probably need to make that an agenda item. Future meeting, Michael will be here, represent Public Works Committee, and just see what we'd be willing to let them work on. And I think what they're kind of guiding, what they're coming out with, their vision is just kind of taking the good parts out of it and work with staff on how we can put that into our Title IX, so.
Send it to the Planning Commission.
Send it to the Planning Commission to adopt, and their, the elements that you.
Right, yeah, which would be a long-term process, but.
But the next amendment, it could be in there.
And it could be also a resolution by council for, for the city part of it, that this is what we want you to procure for lighting standards. And for the city itself, if we ever get new streetlights downtown, they'd have a shield on them or a certain Fahrenheit light output on them, or whatever it is, so.
Yes. Thank you. With regards to Dark Skies, I know when they built the, the new logging place up on forty-seven, when that was brought before planning, there was a lot of discussion about Dark Skies, and it was designed specifically to meet certain standards. So I'd be curious to see what additional standards aren't already in Title IX.
Well, so we don't have any of those types of standards in the residential code. Most of the commercial code or conditional use has the aim down, that type of thing, but it is missing in like residential code. If they had a front porch, like where when I built my house, my, mine are lanterns that shoot out, when really, they should probably shoot down. So that's, I think, part of why he wants to get something on the books.
I didn't remember that part.
Yeah, I would support that, getting it on the books. I think it's a good, I think it's a good approach, not to be seeking some kind of recognition, but to be trying to implement the most, you know, effective pieces of it that we can do easily.
And, you know, I suppose, you know, someday, if we keep pushing down that avenue, we might be eligible to go for the certification, but instead of it driving the process.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dale. Is that all?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee? Okay. Any topics on the floor tonight? Can set agenda for acceptance? Set agenda for approvals. Council Meeting Minutes for February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
So there was one scripter's error that was brought to my attention on page three, the last paragraph. Counselor Webb was explaining the designations. It was the Public Works Committee, not the Parks Committee.
Noted.
Reflected on the.
Okay, any other questions or discussions on those Council Meeting Minutes for February twenty-first?
I move to approve the consent agenda for approval with the scripters correct.
So moved, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business tonight? Okay. New business, staff report. S E I filing.
Okay, this is a report brought to you by me. It's the same one I send you guys every year. For those of you who haven't filed before, the statement of economic interest is required for all elected officials, as well as some key staff members, judge, Planning Commission, so basically, big deciding bodies. It's due every year by April fifteenth.
It comes out when? Like the middle of March?
It's the twentieth, I believe. We should be getting an email if we haven't already, to go ahead and.
Any questions on?
Too soon, I got one today.
Any questions on the statement of economic interest for the new council? Okay. And I haven't seen Eddie.
Last year, when I did this, I called in, and the lady was very helpful, took care of it, and was willing to work with you on the phone instead of get on the webpage, fill it out. She was willing to work with you.
Good. Our recorder is very helpful, too, if you have any. And those will do, those are due by April fifteenth, so. Okay, thank you. Oil C C application for Island Grill, found on page five through nine.
Another item that was brought to you by me. I have run it by our police department. It is not a new application, really, it's just a change of ownership. So they already have one of these businesses sold, so they have to reapply in order to get a license again. It has to formally go through before council.
Any questions or discussions on the application?
Police Department have any issues? Nope.
I see our printer had a little problem up top, is why I didn't quite understand where they checked the box up top. You gotta look real close, it gets branched.
Yeah.
Is that ours or his?
It's probably the way it's scanned.
Oh, okay.
He printed it and let it scan.
I move to approve the liquor license application for Blue Roof Ventures. It's written.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Wagner? Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Aaron? So Officer Kendall has graduated. He graduate next month from the academy. He's doing really well. He has a pretty good GPA. We have one candidate that.
Okay.
Skip this part.
Your grant. First on your grant. Your grant was up first.
Wanna give us some.
He was like, boom, boom, let's get us out of here.
Didn't know I was supposed to go.
There you go.
Oh.
There you go.
So you want me to start with the grant first?
Yes.
So we would like to bring before the council permission to apply for this grant. Met with superintendent at the school, and we are trying to focus on truancy and, in order to get a school resource officer into the school, or for another position for the department, to benefit both the school and us. So I think that this grant is the way to go, because it does kind of focus on truancy, so, and that's one of our biggest problems. So.
I think it's a three, it's three hundred thousand, a three-year.
Yeah, so it should be a little over three-year, that's what it should fund for.
Three years.
Yeah.
And then what Ewolani and what Mr. Hellman was talking about, if they can get the data that it's moving, then they have a better chance at the end of that three years of getting like the cops grant to continue the position, if they can use it to show the truancy data is, you know, absences are declining. And it's, you know, shot in the dark. We can apply, and if it comes out, great. If it doesn't, well, we're where we were already.
Any, what are the strings on this? Any strings? I know some of the other grants, I think like that cops grant, or whatever you just last mentioned.
Yeah.
There was like, then you had to bring them into your force at the end of this time period.
Yeah.
Then was.
There's nothing like that.
Nothing like that in this one? So it's just basically a three-year grant for, that's our old position.
Yeah, focusing on truancy, so.
Focusing on truancy. Yeah. But we, we would use that officer kind of like we did before.
The school resource officer, yeah. Yeah, so anytime there's no school.
Summertime and.
They're writing tickets.
Occurrences and.
Case numbers.
Yeah.
Stephanie, are you requiring or asking for a motion that we approve this?
Yes, we'll approve the application for this grant.
Okay, good. Any council like to make a motion to move forward with this grant? Application?
I, I have a question for Stephanie. Do I have to announce any kind of conflict? Because the potential.
Technically, no, because you are not paid and it is not.
Your husband's not gonna be the officer?
Yeah, but I would declare a potential conflict just to be.
Yeah, okay. I, as, as a city counselor and school board member, I am going to officially declare my self as a potential conflict of interest, so.
Okay, good.
And I won't make the motion, but I.
Okay, yes.
I'll make a motion then. So I'll move that direct staff to move forward with the grant application for a Brian discretionary community project funding.
So moved, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye. Thank you. Okay, business from the departments.
Now it's your big part.
So like I was saying, Officer Kendall is going to graduate in April. He's got a really good GPA. He's having a good time.
What?
It's fine. Sorry, we're interrupting you. We'll discuss it later.
Okay. We do have one of our two candidates. He's going through backgrounds right now and should be done within about a week or two, so we can give him an official hire date. Because I don't see anything so far that would prevent him from passing, so. That, we've met our 2022 requirements by the state to include eight hours of use of force, firearms, and one hour of.
Any other questions for our local law enforcement? Good to see you up at the school again. Thank you, sir. Mornings and evenings, too. Thank you, Sergeant. Okay, ordinances and resolutions, resolution 2023 dash 02, adopting a supplemental budget.
Okay, so as usual, when we get to the halfway point, there's usually some funds that need to be adjusted. So I spelled it out pretty much in the staff report. In years past, the supplemental budget has had each line item listed, which made it kind of confusing. So this time, and I checked with the auditors, I was able to present it by category, which is how we adopt our budget. The official document is adopted this way. But I did bring, I do have all the information, the detailed information, if anybody has any questions about any, any of the funds that we're changing. So if there's anything more that you need to explain, then what's in the staff report? I hope you don't want me to read everything. Thank you. And then was there one more change we were gonna have? No, just. Counselor Webb, bring that up. Okay.
Well, I did have something I want to have council entertain. During the budget process for this fiscal year, our resources were pretty constrained in the general fund. We did not allocate any funding to our general fund facility reserve, which we had pretty much kind of indicated we really wanted to do every year. I believe that's 24 grand.
Well, I think we started with that. I think the last couple of years, we've only done 10, haven't we? Is that the one we're keeping it spread to now? The years? Yeah, that's one of them. I think it's 24. Was it 24?
I know the last, I looked at my budget book, the last year that we put in was 24 grand.
I must have been thinking about that. I didn't check that.
I should have asked you that today.
But I just, yeah, I did quick math.
With Angie and, and just to ask, because I couldn't remember my budget book. I didn't have a pencil then, so I was like, I don't think we funded that. But, you know, trying to remember my, you know, my, what I remembered. And I asked her, and she said, no, we didn't fund it. So, so basically, all it would be is a 24 grand transfer out of the general fund to the facility, the general fund facility reserve and subtract 24 grand from the contingency amount. She was, you were putting about 100 grand into contingency.
Yeah, 122 is what it is. It bumped up from 20, so.
It's, I, I, you know, and I broke this earlier, so if staff had any concerns, we could hear those.
I'll just have to.
We're gonna be beating the roof on this building and that building here and.
Yeah, we know they're still keeping water out, but they have heat damage and other things most of the years.
I think we got 79 grand in that account right now or so. So that's gonna be cutting it close. Or it won't leave us with much, so we need to, we need to fund that if we can. It's my opinion anyhow.
So is that, Angie, is that what Dale just described the process? That would, that's how we increase the general fund?
Well, yeah, we would just, I would just have.
Basically?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
I would change this document.
In the sentence of the second paragraph?
Yeah. Are you looking, what are you looking at? I'm looking at the.
Page 13.
Looking at the staff report.
General fund, oh, cash on hand is being increased.
Yeah, that, that's not changing. The only thing that's changing would be the transfer out amount would decrease, and the contingency amount would decrease to match that. And then we would also then, I would have to add a line to fund the, the facility reserve that's not even on there at all. Because it's not in this document right now.
Oh, in this document.
Yeah, so I'll, so yeah, if you guys approve of that, then you would just, you would adopt this with the changes, and then I would update it before we make it.
Which the charges are? Facility reserve transfer will be 24,000.
Transfer in, 24,000.
And contingency in the admin fund will be reduced?
Reduced by that. Yeah, the transfer out will be increased.
I think if we cut it because we were worried and now we have it, it makes sense to put it back.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I didn't even look at any of the smaller funds when I did this. I just, you know, the five major operating funds. So it didn't even occur to me to leave that, yeah.
Any other discussion on the supplemental budget?
Need a motion?
We do.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 2023 dash 02, a resolution, resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2022 dash 2023 with the addition of $24,000. Call it.
Transfer out?
Transfer out to the general fund facility reserve and the subsequent reduction in the general fund contingency by 24 grand.
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded. You call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Very good.
He's giving me a headache. Counselor Ash has seconded it?
Yes. Correspondence, city-county dinner invitation.
Okay, this is brought to me as you probably have on your calendar. Save the date for tomorrow. That is not when the city-county dinner is. They decided to instead schedule it for March 28th at 5:30, and the location is on your guys'. So if you could let me know by tomorrow if you are going to be coming in, or if you will have a spouse or partner with you, so that I can go ahead and RSVP. The city will pay for your guys' dinner, but they will not pay for your.
But you could, you could bring that money to you so that we can just write one check?
They usually do it separately when people have done it for me, but either way.
Oh, can you pay there?
Yeah, yep.
Oh, because I've never, they've never, I've never been to one where they were actually had cash to give you change.
I received money back when I was there.
Oh.
Or when we hosted, not when I was there.
So either way, I guess.
Didn't know if it would be a nightmare for Angie to bring in that money and put it out.
No. She'll be trying to sneak through, not paying.
Dealer's choice. It's up to you.
Okay, everyone?
I'll go.
I'll go.
And that'll be one.
Trust me.
Yes.
Number two.
You're not going at all?
Probably not.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, city administrative report.
Okay, so the river and Umatilla Street ramps had their final inspection today and passed. So we are done with ODOT. I don't have my money yet.
Yeah.
Oh, right, they passed so that we can turn in and get reimbursed. The Spencer Avenue, I did meet with them, as I stated in here, they're gonna allow us a temporary pass to be able to apply for SEA funding, and then they're gonna include Spencer Ramp in their project plan for 2024. Jeffrey's picking up conduit tomorrow for the installing that electrical conduit from the transformer, so we can get that all moved. And then, once we get that moved, I'm talking to Dean as on kind of a leave of absence from the fire department, so I'm waiting till he gets back. And then I'll be talking to him and Rob about networking, seeing what the potential is for a practice burn, and if with Ms. Birkenfeld and Banks also contributing, because our fire station alone doesn't have the capacity to do the whole thing. And if that isn't reality, then we'll go out for bid. We do have three interested companies that want to bid the job. The tricky part with going out for bid is we have no money in the budget for this project. So we'll have to see how it works out, or maybe it comes down the line. But that's what we're doing with that. I have not had my follow-up meeting with the old dump group. I did send them another email saying, hey, are we gonna meet? You know, kind of priding or prodding them to do something about it. So lake docks, in discussing with Oregon Marine Construction, I'm a little frustrated because I don't know why they bid us to spend $39,000 on docks that they are telling me now are rotten and should just be replaced. But they did do that. So what we're looking at doing is the restoration enhancement grant. There's one specifically for angler access through the Department of Fish and Wildlife that becomes available to apply for in July. So we're potentially just gonna put some floats underneath so that the docks don't tip forward, that uncomfortable tip they do when too many people are on the front bank of it, and limp them through the summer until we can apply for that funding. What's interesting is when I talked to Topper Industries eight months ago about putting, getting a bid for new docks, they again bitted timber construction, which we need to get away from timber construction if it only lasts us 20 years for 100 grand. We need to go to something metal with grading that's got a longer lifespan. So that's kind of what we're gonna be looking at. One option that we've talked about is having someone just fabricate them for us. If we could get an engineered plan and have them fabricated for less than what Topper, because I think Topper deals with really big arenas, the ports, people that have no end or bottom of their pocket of money. And we are very small. I think the restoration enhancement grant, we have a pretty good chance that they'd be interested in it because they were the ones that, ODFNW were the ones that worked with the Lions and the groups originally to fund the docks. So we've taken care of them for 20 years. They've proven very useful, and we think we have a good shot of applying to have them replaced with them. This collective bargaining, are there any questions on the docks? Sorry, I kind of rushed through stuff. The collective bargaining discussions, so they reviewed it. They do not, the association does not feel we need a second meeting based on the one change we made, so you guys will be seeing that with the track changes shown of what changed from the original version we're still practicing under and what changes all parties wanted to make at your March 20th meeting. And then you would just review that and then authorize me to sign it. Sorry, it's a long day. The park restroom damage, so the men's restroom at Brenonia Lake will remain closed until further notice. We have ordered a replacement toilet tank or toilet entirety because it's a pressure tank, so we have just closed it and we're waiting for the parts to get here. And so we also, the Spencer middle stall of the restroom is closed as well for the fire that took place in the toilet, wall-mounted toilet, so that's on its way to us also. And then upcoming meetings, you guys have the work session on next Monday, the 13th, for council rules, and then the council meeting on the 20th.
Yep.
Do you guys have any questions for me?
So on the topic of park bathrooms, do we have any update on the Wi-Fi and cameras?
No, because we have to install the pole, so we're working on that and the electrical at the same time where they're gonna pull the electrical from. So we're kind of working with Blue Mountain on the layout that they propose so that we can get the pole installed for mounting kind of the central pole with the cameras. The ones that go on the buildings won't be hard because there's already electrical in lakes. In the loop, our electrician's in the loop about all of that. It just wants, has to get installed first.
Okay.
Okay. On the lake docks, is all of it wood? I thought part of it is metal.
Part of it is metal, but the whole framing system is pressure-treated wood. And then what we're talking about doing with the restoration enhancement grant is just getting the dock platform replaced and reusing the aluminum handrail, because there's nothing wrong with that, just unbolting it, having, saving money, having them redo the, and then bolting it back on. Really, all we need is the two 10 by eight platforms that the ramps sit on, and then the two eight by 50 dock platforms. The ramps, we already have the grating, so, and they're all aluminum, so there's nothing wrong with those. So we're trying to move towards the long project that'll have some longevity. But yeah, it's kind of unfortunate that they bid, their bid was timber frame, heavy-duty timber frame construction for $107,000 for the two docks. So that's not really in the cards, just to have to do it. It's like $5,000 a year, and then they're closed again.
Right, that's way too.
Money, yeah.
Yeah. So to shore those up a little bit for this next summer, is there any ideas yet?
Yeah, so they had talked to me, so Owen, Oregon Marine Construction, gave us a bid of 5,000 to do temporary help float. They said they would sell us floats if we wanted to install them ourselves. But they aren't holding us hostage to their $5,000 number. If we get someone that could get in there with waiters and bolt something underneath, they don't care. So parks is very, parks is very tight with, well, no, literally, Brian was a very short man, and he stood right outside of it. It is not that deep, right in the front of those docks.
No.
I was kind of surprised because I expected him to like, be like up here, and he wasn't. I was like, oh, how deep is? I was like, oh, how deep is that? Not too deep right there, but.
I was just redneck engineering, there's a lot of plastic blue drugs that Jeff has.
Yeah, we were talking about that, or even just tire tubes, get them in there and then inflate them. I mean, because it's not that much pounds for pressure down that you'd need to keep those fronts from tipping. And the backs don't tip, you can, everybody can stand on the back and those floats are doing great. The platform where the ramps are, that's not the problem, it's just that front. And when he went under there, he said some of the tires had just fallen away from it. So it totally lost the buoyancy, even when they were waterlogged, they had buoyancy, but they, he can just see the rod sticking out and no tire there, so it might be in the silt underneath, so, yeah. Parks budget is very tight, just from expense and danger trees we had to have taken down by not our staff and just different things, so we're trying to make it cost-effective, yeah.
Those chlorine barrels would work well.
Just get one pinned under there.
Fill them with water, put it underneath there, and then push air in to push the water out.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the C.A.?
Are the ramps going to be replaced before, before, you know, the summer stuff takes place?
Yeah, so we have the grading and the clips, and Mitch just got the last of the bolts, so they're gonna be replaced within this month. The grading, the marine plywood goes, and it's the fiberglass molded grate system that goes down.
Okay, thank you to the. Items from the mayor and councillors, I have one thing I'd like to declare. I'm meeting with, it's hard for me to pronounce this, but I'm gonna do my best. Kholthar Paravi, he's from Columbia City, he's a volunteer. He's been a resident of Columbia City for his entire life. He's a soil conservationist, and he's already met with Mayor Bob and Claskinai and Mayor Jerry and Rainier. He called me up this last week and would like to meet with me, and basically he's putting together an MOU, understanding about soil conservation. So, I'm gonna meet him here at City Hall at 11 o'clock tomorrow morning and see what we could do. I think there's a deadline for the March, he wants everyone to be on board by March 21st, first day of spring, so.
Yeah, and he was, I think he's looking for proclamation.
Proclamation.
March 20th meeting, yeah.
Right, for, and, which is prior, well, one day.
Yeah.
Council meeting's the 20th, so it would.
One day ahead.
Would work pretty well, so I'll, I'll meet him and introduce him to Josette tomorrow and see what, see what he has for us, so. That's all I have. Any other council members wish to have any items?
Well, I attended the school engagement meeting they had for the community the other night. Left me with a very good feeling. Very concerted effort by the school staff and the board, everybody down there, teachers. Kind of reminded me of the old days, how the school was more the center of the community, I mean, they were the hub. And I think over the years, we've kind of drifted from that, but now, that, that was a good meeting. I'm hoping they can keep up the momentum. They had the one theme there for that meeting was how to get their attendance up. Basically, it was main theme, there's other goals, but you can't educate them if they're not there. And so, I'm glad to see that we're pursuing the SRO opportunity to help with that. You know, there's been discussions, I know I've had several discussions with people, board members and stuff on that, about trying to get that back into place. Meeting they had prior, I proposed that as a way of helping with the truancy issue, I mean, Mr. Hellman there, Superintendent Hellman has, he likes to use the carrot approach, which is fine, but I think there's, there is a point with some people, you have to use the hammer approach, so. Well, I think it's a balance of two things there. But yeah, very good. He, he's quite the salesman, he's quite the, I wouldn't say maybe salesman, because that's probably a derogatory term for some people, but it was, he's like a cheerleader. And he really knows how to get people motivated and uplift your spirits, so. Big kudos to the school. Hopefully, we can mend our little divide, the city-school divide that we've had in the past, uncertain things, all come together. So earlier, we talked about the committees and kind of the process, so wanted to bring back up for a little discussion maybe on the Parks Committee and the smoking ordinance. This is one that, again, there's starting to be a lot of time being put into. And I don't know where the council sits on this, I mean, enforcement of it is problematic, especially for our current staffing level. I'm not real keen on ordinances that we don't enforce. My opinion. I mean, I understand the desire to deal with people that are smoking in places where it's. And the, you know, the ordinance that we have, I suppose, if it come down, push come to shove, and the police were called, then it gives them something to go off of, but have you ever been called? A smoking complaint? I mean, and that's the other part of this is, you know, how big of an issue are we dealing with here? I mean, I, no, no, I'm just conflicted, and I'd kind of like to hear some other viewpoints from other councillors.
So, just a question, since this is something that's a topic that is, is a big topic and a big discussion, I personally would prefer to have it, know that we're gonna have a discussion about it so I can kind of think about it before we have a discussion, rather than just bringing it up last minute when other people like, including the public, might like to hear our discussion, if they know we're gonna have it, at least the opportunity.
My question, is it, is it a big issue? I mean, or is it just a matter of, okay, maybe some of our parks have not adequate signage, or, or what's going on? I mean, is, you know, we have designated smoking areas and.
But they didn't, I think, I think the trick, the tricky part is, is when council, the council that adopted that was right on the cusp of the council getting replaced, some of those members that came in were not in favor of that at all. So when it came to installing the signage, the benches, the, all of that, the direction to staff at that point was, we're not into it. So staff didn't do it, so there is no current signage, other than at Hawkins Park, it says, "Swim at your own risk" and no smoking, and children under 10, or whatever, it had some signage on Hawkins, but there's no signage that say, you know, you know, playground, within 50 feet of a playground is not, you know, there's not that kind of signage, that wasn't ever implemented. So I think what their, their initial letter to staff, which I'll have to look at whether it was to staff or council, was to implement those areas. And so I think if you talk to some people, they'd say there's a big problem. If you talk to other people, they'd say the problem's more kind of specific individuals that don't care, probably never will care what they're doing. But, so I think it's just across the board both ways. But if you guys want to put it on as an agenda item, we can send you the original ordinance, so you can see that, then you could have a public discussion. If members of the committee wanted to come and tell you why they feel so strongly about it, that would be their chance to do that as well, that might be a better.
So, they're basically doing several things, kind of, they've outlined like a multi-step process for their goals right now. So the first thing is, and they've already dialed it back from the full scope that it could have been. The full scope coming from the county was that pretty much every city except Claskinai has fully tobacco-free all parks, and that includes not just smoking tobacco, but all forms. They've already come back from, they've decided as a committee, that's not what they're pursuing right now. So the first step they're looking at is, we have an ordinance that has never been enforced, so there are, out of the seven parks, it's like two parks don't allow smoking anywhere, several parks allow smoking only in designated areas, and other parks allow smoking anywhere except excluded areas. But none of that is signed at any of the parks. So, so the, whether it's a big problem is something they're working on, and the county is doing that work, not the committee, to do some community outreach, try to gauge interest in this, because where it came from was parents that brought it back up. And so, they're looking at if we, at minimum, the first step is they want to see the current, you know, we passed this, and they feel like all the balls were dropped after that. The second step is that in it, there's a lot of wording that's just super unclear. And there are actually parts where the distance from a playground versus the distance from the designated smoking area are in direct.
Conflict.
Conflict, thank you.
Tired.
With each other. So they're looking at a, like a lightly updated version of the current ordinance, just to fix perceived issues. The last step, if council and community had interest, would be to go only inhaled smoke-free. But that would be, again, third tier. So that's kind of the, all options of the scope right now.
And I did share with them the concern about enforcement, and the concern that without enough police staff, then you have citizens trying to enforce, and then the police are taxed because they're coming there to deal with the citizen conflict, so.
So I would, I would recommend it, we already have the ordinance in place. And so, you could bring it back to the council, and we could look at it, decide whether we want to amend it or, or continue on with it. We want to continue on with it, we'll, we'll just start enforcing it and post the sign.
Yeah, get the, then, after July 1, put the money in to buy all of that, because, oh, and I can get together for your next packet, how much that would be.
I think their current goal, depending on the outcome of the proposed updates at the March meeting, like if that was approved by them, would be for that to get moved to council for a future agenda. So I don't know if it makes sense to try to wait till April to see if that comes to fruition.
Say that one more time, I'm not following.
So, they asked for a new red line, right? The one that just cleans up the issues in the current ordinance? And they felt that if, if they approved that at this, at the March Parks meeting, then that would be ready to push to Stephanie to get on an agenda, future agenda for us already. So I don't know if you, maybe you don't want to put it on the next March meeting if that could come in April? I don't know if you want to wait a few weeks, I don't know.
Well, the reason why I think it's valuable for you guys to talk about it ahead of them bringing the red line is if you guys aren't all in favor of spending the money that it costs to implement the ordinance, then the red line may be more than just what they're thinking of when we really bring the ordinance forward.
Okay.
Because I, I think it kind of builds on the change, but I, I can do whatever you guys want. I can wait, I can bring it, whatever.
I'd like to see it again.
Okay, so I'll bring it in March, and I'll just get some estimations for what is in there, what that would currently cost us, if we were gonna put it all in, okay.
Okay.
If they are already working on some proposed modifications, would it be a benefit to have a joint or a work session where they could come and explain their suggestions at this point, rather than us doing work, them doing work?
Well, I don't believe they've done the work for the red line yet, so they haven't even sat as a committee and agreed what their, their first minimal change would be.
Yeah, they've outlined.
They're not gonna come, they'd be coming with differing opinions to the work session, not, they don't know how effective that might be.
Well, at this point, council is deciding, do we want them to work on it? Do we even want restrictions on smoking? Do we want to enforce what we currently have, or do we want it to be stricter? That's what staff's asking council to decide.
Right.
Do you guys want to see an amendment, or do you want your committee to be working on it or not?
Then we go from there.
Okay.
That's what I got from Dale.
Because if everyone's a go, then there's no trouble with you guys saying, yeah, Angie and Josette planned to put this money in the budget for parks so that we can institute it in July, you know? And then semantics or little tweaks to the ordinance in their first draft isn't gonna be that big. It's, the, the problem was playground versus structure. So where the play shed had a shorter distance than the playground, that's, there's some of that that's a little confusing and combats itself in the ordinance.
For what, as far as I've, never had a problem at the lake with smoking.
Yeah.
Nobody's ever complained, you know, and most of the cigarettes that are, like, CM are in the parking lot.
Yeah. Well, and I know we, Jana did have a lot of interaction down at the confluence. Is that in the park, is it in the, like, she saw butts in the rocks down there? I don't know, unless we have someone going down there and patrolling, I don't know how we'd catch that person. But we did put the, the other issue she had down there was dog doo, and we did get bags and stuff and signage for the "pick up after your dog," now we just need to pick up after your cigarette smoker sign.
Even so, we wouldn't be able to enforce it at the confluence.
Yeah.
That's in the rivers.
Right.
Friday play?
That's a quieter way, yeah.
Yeah, it's a water way.
So there's just issues with it, and I think some of the information has changed. Now what we know, how far we know particulates will travel and stuff, versus the 10-foot law that the state did ages ago. So that's some of the stuff they're looking into too, should we be increasing distances to playgrounds to kind of keep that away from kids? So, they're looking into a lot of stuff.
Okay, anything else? Okay, action item summary.
Okay, so we're going to get the smoking area costs to implement those signage and benches and stanchions for collecting cigarette butts. We'll get rough estimates for your March 20th meeting when we're bringing the smoking ordinance, the original one, back to you to review and discuss, and then we'll get real ones of that to go from for butts more. And then we're going to look into, so did you guys want, when, do you want the dark skies packet on your next meeting? Do you want to wait till the first meeting in April? Or you want to look at, I didn't, that's on my action items, but I'm not sure where council is at with that. I didn't, that's on my action items, but I'm not sure where council is at with that.
I have a question. In Dale's report from Public Works, didn't you say that they, they voted or agreed to not to pursue that?
The bicycle part of it.
Oh, the bicycle.
What they wanted to do was pursue the dark skies initiative, but modify it to not actually applying for the certification, but gleaning the pertinent parts from it and seeing how that would work.
So what do you think they want us to do at this stage?
They, they, they would like to have our blessing to do that.
Can we just give them?
Do you guys just want to give them your blessing and bring it? Well, to bring the elements that are of the utmost value and importance as proposed, like to council as a proposal to go into the code through, going through Planning Commission, all the steps.
Then they'll dig into it, come the recommendation back to us.
I would be interested.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you guys are kicking it back to the committee. We don't need to bring it for your guys to discuss at this time.
We don't need to discuss the full thing if they're not going for the full thing. Let them look at it and determine what they see as beneficial, that is achievable.
One of you just said, bring it to us, to discuss it, so I'm just making sure.
Yeah. So we'll wait for the.
You guys will look at the packet while they're working on it, and at some later date with a recommendation, you'll discuss it.
Right.
Okay. So then those are the two items I had.
Anything else that she might have missed? Okay, thank you for all being here tonight and, and your participation, and I'll adjourn the meeting at 8:15, meeting adjourned.